Welcome, Tēnākoutou, Tēnākoutou, Tēnākoutou Katoa. Welcome to the third and final day of the People's Inquiry Hearing into the impacts and effects of toxic chemicals and poisons on our people, wildlife and environment. Thank you all who have been joining us over these last three days and to all of our speakers, and especially to those who are going to be speaking to the hearing today. Thank you to our committee and to our commissioners for all your dedicated listening and attention, you know, during these three days of really powerful testimonies. I'd like to invite Hema Weihongi, one of our commissioners, to start off this session with a kataki. Hema.
Tēnākoutou, meinoitatai. Manoa mai te mōri nuku, manoa mai te mōri rangi, ko te mōri haikai mo tātāi. He mōri tipua, kapakuru mai te pō, tau mai te mōri, hē miee, huiie, tai kiee. Kīnga waka o te na iwi, o te na iwi, nau mai haeramai. Kīnga maunga fakaruru hau o te motu, wakato mai, mōri ora kia tātāi. Kato, tēnākoutou, kia ora tātāi kato.
Kia ora, thank you, Hema. So before we begin today, I'd just like to let everybody know that unfortunately, Professor Tom Kearns has had an unexpected medical thing that he has to attend to. So he probably won't be joining us today, but he has informed us and we will provide him with the recordings of the session so that he can get up to date on everyone's testimony. So our thoughts go out to him today and also to the people in Auckland who have who have unfortunately been affected by a really terrible violent act. So yeah, our thoughts go out to them. So thank you, everybody. So I'm just going to start with a little bit of housekeeping today, just to refresh everybody's minds before we get started. This session is being recorded and when we're, as soon as we're able, we will edit the sessions and pop them up for public viewing. They will be on our website and on our YouTube channel because this is a public hearing. So thank you. The schedule for today can be found on our website for all of our speakers. I might just briefly go over who we've got speaking today. We're going to start off the morning with Dr. Justine Philip. And then we have Joel Natura from Fariroa Murai. And Dr. Fiona McQueen will share with us about her book, The Silent Forest, at about 11:25. Then we'll have an hour for lunch. After that, we have Dr. Jody Bruning, who will be speaking on the failures of the EPA glyphosate and bio solvents. Then Dr. Hugh Jelly will be talking about the impact of glyphosate on ecological health. Max Purnell will be sharing observations of a citizen farmer. Frank Rollson will also speak on glyphosate and fluoride and the failures of the EPA. Then we'll have myself and Stephanie McKee will be our final closing testimony for the day. So, and I will be facilitating the morning session and then I'll hand over to Ursula for the afternoon session. So thank you. And as I said, the chat function is closed for attendees. Please, if you do have any questions, just pop them in the Q and A. And if we can answer them, we will. But we are keeping a record of all those comments and questions that come through in the Q and A to deal with some of them later. We're taking regular breaks, so please make sure that you have your water ready and, you know, that you take advantage of these short breaks to have a bit of a stretch. Yeah, really important. If listening to some of these testimonies makes you want to share information, please do email us. We really would like to hear from you. Also, your messages of support are welcome. Support and advocacy links will be posted in the chat for anyone who might need extra support. And just to reiterate, we are a completely non-government funded inquiry. We are volunteers, we are all volunteers, including our commissioners. So if you would like to support us financially, we do have a given, give a little page that's linked on our website. So any donations are welcome. Speakers, so when it's your turn to speak, we'll invite you to, I'll transition you from being an attendee to a panelist, which means that then, then you can enable your audio and video. And then when you're finished, I'll transition you back to being an attendee. Yesterday, we did have some technical issues. The internet did go down for a bit. So hopefully today we're, we're in the all clear and, but we'll just deal with whatever we, whatever comes up. So yeah. So at its heart, this inquiry is about creating a safe and respectful forum for everyone who wants to share their experiences without judgment and with a compassionate listening ear of our commissioners and our committee. Today, we are especially focused on researchers, advocates and scientists. So it will be a very, very interesting day with a lot of information. So welcome, everybody, and let's get started. We're a little bit ahead of time. We'll say, commissioners, would you like to? Yeah, we've got a brief greeting from our commissioners. Would you like to maybe each have a quick word before we invite our first speaker to join us?
Well, kia ora tātāi. Catherine's absent at the moment, so I'll, I'll start us off. Atumari, everybody. Nice to be back for the third day of our hearing. I'm deeply impressed by the information and knowledge and understanding and that has been imparted to us in the last two days. Deeply saddened by the impacts on people and the environment of the pesticides and other toxic chemicals that are so liberally spread around this country. But, and humbled by the, the passion and the strength and the power of people seeking change. And so I look forward to hearing more of the same today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Hema.
Oh, tēnākoutou. I'd just like to echo what Mio was saying. It's been an absolute privilege to be able to witness and listen to the testimonies. I don't really have much more to add because it was quite powerful. It was, I'm so very grateful that people felt safe enough to be able to express themselves. And I think that was what we aim to, to provide for you. But I'm looking forward to today and to continue this conversation. So tēnākoutou, kia ora.
Thank you, Hema. Catherine.
Yes, tau tāku the sentiments. And maybe can just add a different type of comment to all the submitters and the listeners is that we have, of course, received a lot more written and sometimes video information. And the presentations are just like a snapshot summary of these materials. And we're going to certainly try, we're listening and reading our best to try and do justice to figure out how perhaps best to summarize and represent that in a report that comes out at the end. So we are grateful to the summaries, again, the submitters drawing attention to their own summary of what they think is most important to let everybody know about their experiences. Kia ora tātāi.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Was there anything else anyone wanted to share before we get started? We might ask Justine to start five minutes early. That's all right? Yep. Okay. I'll, I see Justine, you're, you're in the room. So if it's all right with you, we're going to start five minutes early. I'm just going to invite you to jump over to becoming a panelist. And I'll ask our committee to turn off their cameras and audio. Thank you. Hi. Justine, thank you for being ready to start early. Welcome.
This is the first time I've done a talk on Zoom. So yeah, it's slightly terrifying.
You'll be fine.
But anyway, yeah, no, it's good. Yeah.
So I will, I'm going to pop out, but I'll pop back in just before we need to transition to question time, which will probably be about, I'll give you about 15 minutes to speak. And then, and then we'll transition over to question time so that the commissioners can have some time to speak with you after. So welcome, and we're really, really looking forward to hearing from you. Thank you, Justine.
Thanks. Well, first of all, thanks to the commissioners and the organizers for putting this amazing forum together and for the opportunity to talk. My area of research is environmental history and ecosystem management. So this includes examining the impact of 200 years of the agrochemical farming industry on the environment in both Australia and New Zealand. I think we shared a collective sense of bewilderment at the close of talks yesterday about why there is this culture that supports the broad scale use of pesticides such as 1080 in New Zealand. So I think it can be helpful to gain some historical context. So I am going to read the talk. I apologize, but there's a bit of information to get through. My research into the use of vertebrate pesticides and pest control has been an extension from my PhD thesis, which was on the cultural history of the Australian dingo. The dingo is an apex predator and essential to the health of the native ecosystems in Australia. I found many parallels between the treatment of the dingo and the cultural keystone species in New Zealand in early colonial history, the koori dog, the kiore and the kia. These animals were also targeted for eradication over the course of the past 200 years and poisons greatly contributed to their downfall. I described this process as the institutionalization of poison whereby the use of poison has become normalized and supported by services and systems that are embedded within the political, legal and social framework. Institutionalization, as defined by the Oxford Dictionary, is the action of establishing something as a convention or a norm by an organization or culture. I'll start with the story of the kiore. It's a small and predominantly vegetarian mammal that was of huge cultural value to the Maori people. They arrived by canoe in the company of the koori dogs and the pukiko over 800 years ago and in the arms of the Maori people who kept them as pets, totem animals and as a ritual food source. There are many places, names, songs, dances and carving patterns and tattoos that are based on the kiore. This tattoo, the tattoo pukiore style represents a kiore nest and it was tattooed onto the shoulders of the Maori warriors. The range of the kiore was once widespread, but today they are restricted to a few offshore islands and to the south of the South Island. With the arrival of shipwrecks and Norway rats, the kiore soon became rare. And they are seasonal breeders. They don't breed up like the northern rats. They don't carry transmittable diseases and so they presented no threat to human health. And they were an important source of protein in the Maori diet. Norway ships and shipwrecks are both implicated in the extinction of the kiore from most of New Zealand mainland post-colonization. And today, the kiore is listed as an introduced species and directly targeted for eradication for their perceived impact on bird populations, although there is a tiny island reserved, reserve, reserve in Northland that is established for them where they are protected. It took five years of negotiations with the Maori community before the New Zealand government of Department of Conservation obtained permission to eradicate kiore from all the offshore islands under the government's jurisdiction. And this was in the 1980s. They used brodificum, toxic kippled maize, wax block rat baits, storm and compound 1080. DOC finally concluded that broadcasting aerial applications of 1080 baits was the most effective method of extermination. The baits dispensed by DOC are designed to target primarily rats, stoats and possums, of which there are millions on the mainland. In 2015, they estimated there were 30 million possums and an unknown number of rodents. The project aims primarily to protect bird populations and New Zealanders are in this for the long term, projecting at least another 30 years of aerial poisoning ahead to obtain their goal of, goal of a predator-free New Zealand. Anyone with a training in ecology has a right to be alarmed. The amount of baiting peaks in what are called mast years, that's every three or four years when the native beech trees shed seed and cause an explosion in the population of invasive species and what is described as a predator plague cycle. In late 2014, DOC targeted the remote region of Fiordland, the last stronghold of the kiore habitat on the mainland, as part of the biggest 1080 poison drop in the country's history. They covered 600,000 hectares of land that year. There is a large body of research, both funded and published by DOC, on the use of 1080 and aerial baiting. The most enthusiastic and consistently positive academic publications, peer reviewed, can all be found in the New Zealand Journal of Ecology and the New Zealand Journal of Zoology. The results are surprising and they run counter to international reports claiming that compound 280 is a relatively humane poison. Now, this is in direct contrast to the World Health Organization findings where it is classified as a hazardous poison. Despite many years of aerial baiting, of the aerial baiting program running, there is no conclusive data showing sustained improvement in bird populations in New Zealand. And many threatened species appear to be decreasing. The lack of scientific data to confirm this either way is a result of the reconstruction and reintroduction projects being largely land management projects and not scientific research. So this means that gathering data, which is extremely difficult, has not been a priority for these reintroduction projects. The fate of the kiore's companion, the koori dog, is what I'll have a look at next. It was believed to be something of a mystery. The koori is believed to have been extinct in the late 1800s, but the causes are listed as unknown. There is speculation that introduced disease or cross breeding with domestic dogs could have been to blame. Prior to British settlement, the koori dog was widespread across New Zealand. Their bones and teeth line the middens dating back to the 14th century. Canine teeth marks left impressions in the ancient bones of moa, whale, seal and small birds. The koori had migrated with the Maori people and like the dingo in Australia, played a central role in the ceremonial and social lives of the human communities. The chief wore cloaks of dog fur. Koori tails were worn as headpieces into battle. And they were attributed special powers of traversing the physical and spiritual worlds, transforming into tanifa and representing powerful symbols of protection. Their fate is closely tied to that of the dingo. The first plan for the destruction of the native dogs was announced in Australia in 1811. The Reverend Samuel Marsden, who was a clergyman, magistrate, landowner and stock breeder, was the force behind the project. And just for, this was just four years before his first self-funded missionary voyage to New Zealand. Marsden is described as having transformed the Maori economy and laid the foundations for New Zealand agriculture over the following two decades. So there's no doubt that the koori dog and the dingo would have presented the same challenges to the emerging landholders on both sides of the Tasman and that both were targeted for extermination. A report from 1817, New Zealand describes large numbers of dogs running wild through different parts of the island. The Maori people were noted to prize them very highly as a companion, as a food source, as well as for their hide and bones for ceremonial purposes. Strickling was soon employed after its discovery in 1880 to kill dingoes in Australia. And it was on the lists of drugs for agricultural purposes commercially and available in New Zealand by 1850. In 1861, the Taranaki Herald recorded that ewes and lambs were constantly being worried and destroyed by the koori Maori dog. And it records also records of poisoning being used to address the problem. So it seems like it's not well documented, but there is considerable amount of evidence that could point to the actual intentional eradication of this important cultural keystone species. Eventually, attention turned to the kia in New Zealand. It's an endemic carnivorous parrot that occasionally turns to attacking live sheep on the runs in the South Island. An estimated 150,000 kia were shot or poisoned between 1880 and 1986 before the species gained full protection and registration on the threatened species list at the same time. The population now hovers somewhere below 1,000. Aerial technology was pioneered in Australia in 1946, targeting rabbits and dingoes. In 1949, New Zealand launched its first aerial baiting campaign. It was under the heading headline of working their farms from the sky. On January the 12th, 1949, here the target was rabbits. And the headlines were triumphant. Air war on rabbits. These are headlines from the newspapers. War against rabbits. Employment of aerial bait success in New Zealand. The death toll was terrific. Air blitz on New Zealand rabbits. And they go on. The campaign in August 1949 dispensed five tonnes of marble sized baits across the South Island of New Zealand using phosphorus bran baits. In 1880 hours of flying, the pilots of two planes covered 220,000 hectares in the Marlborough region. An estimated 35,000 rabbit carcasses were counted from the air after the campaign. And this represented, they said, a 97% kill rate. So this raises a number of questions, like how responsible have these aerial baiting campaigns been in the past for the current biodiversity crisis that we're facing? And also, what is a pest species? The rabbit had been a major source of food during the two world wars for New Zealand. And it supported an international market in the export of tinned and frozen rabbit meat. Plus, there was a huge market for rabbit fur and for fur hats, felt hats rather. They were part of the commons and they provided a much better living for itinerant workers than was offered from farm labor. In fact, at times it was difficult to get cheap farm labor when people could provide for themselves. So taking out the rabbit industry had a number of advantages for the established agricultural industry. The government banned the trade of rabbits in the 1950s in New Zealand. Agricultural production provided larger profits for the country than the rabbit industry, but the money ended up in relatively few hands compared to the more democratic industry of a wild harvest. The superabundance of pest species has represented a unique ecological challenge within New Zealand and Australia. And central to this problem is the lack of economic and cultural value that is assigned to these animals that are given the label of a pest. All of the species targeted within aerial baiting programs today were at one time valuable resources. New Zealand has the European rabbit, the possum, deer, wild pig and small carnivores. Australia also has a guild of retired beasts of burden. They have horses, camels, buffalo, donkey, and their populations thrive outside of agricultural and economic systems. The rabbit industry was once the largest employer in Australia in 1929. And the Australian soldiers in World War II marched into battle wearing hats made of rabbit skins. 10 rabbits were acquired per hat and Australia produced 5,500,000 hats during the war. So this is an extraordinary resource and, and yet it just got labeled as a pest species by the agricultural industry. Another important point to understand in New Zealand's use of vertebrate pesticides is the refusal of the New Zealand government to acknowledge international research and standards for the application and use of these chemicals. And that they have never been considered as responsible for the biodiversity crisis that New Zealand is now facing. I have a paper just recently come out with Oxford University Press Environmental History and that focuses mainly on New Zealand's history with DDT. Now, it's well known that DDT is harmful to the environment and particularly to avian populations. It affects reproduction and causes shell thinning, particularly in birds high up the food chain, such as eagles and owls. For New Zealand, known as the land of the birds, the use of DDT should have rung alarm bells. 71% of New Zealand's nearly 200 bird species are endemic. So nevertheless, when Rachel Carson's book was released in 1962, Silent Spring, exposing the harm of DDT, it was, it practically received no publicity in the New Zealand papers. In 1972, DDT was banned in the United States. And yet, New Zealanders continued to use it liberally across orchards, farmlands and homes with minimal constraints for the following 17 years. In 1989, stockpiles of DDT were discovered. And this prompted a nationwide cleanup. The second great DDT master of 2018 recovered 17 tonnes of persistent organic pesticides, or POPs they're called, and they were removed from farm sheds and stores across the country. One property alone had 2.3 tonnes of DDT in storage. Now, this is three years ago. Okay. So the New Zealand's decision to ignore international research on pesticides has a long history and it also has set a disturbing precedent for environmental laws and policy that need to be urgently addressed today. So I hope that gives you a sort of broader idea of how we got here and what we have to deal with.
Yeah, thank you very much, Justine. That is really, really fascinating and really does help to give context to what we're dealing with in the present day. So I'd like to just hand over to the commissioners now to have some questions and then I'll pop back in when there's one or two minutes left.
Am I right in thinking Maryall might want to go first?
Yes. Thank you. I'm very happy to, as always. Justine, that was a fabulous bit of history and thank you so much for it. I just want to ask if you can submit your speech and also the paper that you sent has just been published with Oxford University. Because this is very important background for understanding why we are where we are at the moment. And so thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Yeah, you can get the Oxford University Press paper. You can get that through the organizers of the forum. Unfortunately, it's, it's under academic sort of lock and key. So we have to give it to you rather than you can just access it online. And then the talk I was, I was working on actually since yesterday, I found some old papers that I'd done. And so it was really good to reread them and to remember about all these things that I haven't published on. So I would like to do that. Yeah.
Thank you. It's actually really useful context for us to frame our report on.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
Excellent.
Oh, have you, so kia ora, thank you so much. That was fascinating, absolutely fascinating. And my question is, that, that attitude, that underlying attitude, do you think that still runs through environmental scientists or, you know, the science fraternity? That, that, that attitude about, oh, well, we'll just get rid of it or just poison it. Do you think that, that has come from that colonial thinking? Has that persisted in academia in terms of scientists, do you think?
I think it was until recently. And now you've kind of reached a tipping point, at least in Australia, where things have got so bad that you have a body of ecologists coming through now. And it's only been in the last 10 years who are really anti the use of poison. They're very pro supporting predator populations. And so it's really, the culture has really changed. When I first started studying the dingo, people just treated the animal like a joke, you know, and it was labeled as an introduced species, a pest species. They completely ignored the, you know, 5,000 plus years of history with the Aboriginal people. And then it's really changed. Now there's a lot of interest. There's, I've got support of a number of really high up ecologists to work with there. And so I think perhaps it's really difficult for New Zealand because we can't get in here. You know, I can't work in New Zealand, you know, with my kind of background. I certainly won't get a job with DOC. I probably, yeah, I have, I can't get anything published in the journals. And so I have to use overseas, which is why I got my last paper done in Oxford. I mean, you need international pressure on you to actually change the, the school of thought here. So at the moment, we don't have a leg and there's only one or two very brave ecologists who will stand up and say, look, this is not right. The rest of them, I mean, you simply can't get a job. So what do you do? You leave the country. Yeah. Yeah. But it's changing, I think, you know, especially.
Or it was like this.
Thank you so much. Tēnākou.
Yeah, thanks for that. I do like that big picture view of, you know, how we got to where we are and, you know, and attitudes, because it's when you look at what lies underneath that you might find connections. So there's a couple of things that I've noticed, and my side is on the regulation. So I picked up a couple pieces, particularly from your paper. And maybe I just get, love to hear your comment, but one of them, yeah, that key theme of ignoring international research. And I've noticed that like, so the EPA, for example, says it doesn't have the money to do all the full reassessments, you know, that's what. You know, that's why you have to pay, because they don't have a budget for this sort of thing. I thought, well, why do we even do those whole assessment processes? We could just say a default position is, say, the EU or someone that has another bigger budget than us. Right? And I understand that now the law changes, you know, said that we can use the coming proposed, you know, bill to change procedure will allow more of that. But that also links in to two other aspects. One, we don't monitor, and I think one of the things as an illustration of ten eighty, if it's, we don't count in vertebrates in this country, insects and all these other, you know, creepy crawlies, right? We don't count them. Not even the, I think the only one that's counted is that one, the grass with the ground grub that's limited to one pasture in the South Island, because they can count it, right? And that's, you know, threatened. So no one knows what's actually happening, so no one's counting. So when we come to ten eighty, if that's, the insect side of things is not part of the picture. As an example, if the reason that's not used, say, in the UK is because it's a powerful insecticide, it has collateral damage. Well, if we don't count the collateral damage, then it doesn't happen. And so, and I just wondered if that, is that part of the ecosystemic blindness that, I mean, I don't know what you see in your ecologists and your zoologists and the journals that you were talking about. Are they just not looking at what we would might always call externalities, you know, things that are outsourced, they don't count? Therefore, it doesn't happen. And the other thing that's linked to, we're solving a problem. We've got to always, we're solving a problem, we have a method, we're going to fix it. But we don't look at all the other things that might also go wrong with it. And I just want, anyway, so all of those things seem to come out of your background, big picture, and they fit into other big pictures that we're seeing. So, yeah, I'd love to hear your comments.
Yeah. There was a bit of the talk I had to cut out. I was trying to cut it back in size, but I mean, I'm talking about ecosystem health. And the more diverse your ecosystem, more healthy it is, the more resilience it's got. The more that you bombard it with poisons, the harder it is for it to recover. And also, you, you know, like monocultural environments, which are like our agricultural environments, they don't, they don't support a healthy functioning ecosystem. So you need diversity and you need all these species. And when you come in and you do aerial baiting, there's no way to monitor it. You can't get in there. These are, the whole idea of aerial baiting is to target places that you can't get to by foot. So there's no way of knowing what it's doing. And, and from, I think there's, you know, like increasingly reports that it's doing harm. I mean, here, I'm in the South Island in Kia country, but there's no Kia here. And, you know, parts up in the Alps where there were Kia two years ago, there's reports that they're completely gone. And this is, you know, really recent. Recent, and people are noticing it. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's very, very, very complicated. I mean, you know, the whole idea of the predator free New Zealand is absolutely flawed, you know? That's a very old colonial concept to get rid of all the predators. And it's been proven to fail time and time again. I mean, we need them. It doesn't matter whether they're introduced or not. Most species will actually have a positive effect on the environment if they are left to, you know, to do their own thing. I mean, there might be some cases where they need to be controlled, but obviously, I mean, the best way to control species is by putting a price on their head. And actually, I was going to show you this that I have got here. This is a really beautiful possum skin cushion. And these cost three hundred dollars in Hokitika. And yet we call them, you know, the possums are pest species and we go and poison them. I mean, this is an asset. This is absolutely beautiful. You have these resources and they need to be, they need to be treasured.
Just one more thing I wanted to ask you. I'm partly forgotten in that, oh, yes. I was walking the Kepler Track recently in the South Island, beautiful. I saw one Kia. I could not believe there weren't any Kia there. But this is a question that I have no idea if this is a relevant association or not. But it strikes me that concomitant with all of the poisoning of the South Island has become the invasion of wasps in the forest. We know that ten eighty is a potent insecticide and knocking, probably knocking out a lot of indigenous species. Do you have any view on whether that kind of broad scale poisoning with ten eighty is in some way linked to the incredible increase in the non-native wasps in the forest?
It certainly could be. I don't know about wasps in particular, but species, a lot of species actually react to these kind of things happening in the environment by breeding up, you know, which is what will happen with your mice and your rats, you know? If you wipe out a whole lot of them in one season, they will breed three times as much in the next. And that is what could be happening if you have a particularly, you know, virulent kind of insect population. You know, and they thrive around monocultural farming lands as well.
Okay, thank you.
Was there a final question for Justine? No?
You said that these last few days, last two days had prompted you to think, oh, yes, I was going to write about that. And now I want to, what, what kind of things do you think you're going to be writing about?
Oh, more about the history of these amazing animals that have almost been forgotten, you know? And about the classification of what we call an introduced species and a native species, you know? Or feral and wild animals. Wildlife is protected, you know, wildlife is now native. And feral animals are to be destroyed, whereas, you know, a hundred years ago, all of the pest species were native that they were getting actively getting rid of in both Australia and New Zealand. So these things change over time and it's just, it's not a, there's a tendency to think that because it's called a pest species that it's not sentient and it has no role in the environment. And it's, it's really, it doesn't, that's not the case, you know? So I'd like to write more about that.
Interesting. I must admit, I've seen a few too many of those videos of stoats crawling into trees that of course make holes because they're protecting themselves from the traditional predators, which are those big eagles and, you know, falcons and things. You know, the ecosystem we have is definitely not suited to some of them. So, yeah.
I mean, but the thing about the DDT is that it thins the eggshells of the birds. And so when you've got your stoats wandering around, you know, birds can protect themselves. I mean, they've always had predators, they've been avian, but they still protect themselves. But if the eggs themselves are very thin, it's easy prey for the, for the stoats, you know? So I think there's more to the story than to actually blame stoats, who say.
Or, like you say, the method, you know?
Yeah.
Trap and use and respect. It's different from just indiscriminate poisoning. So I think, yeah.
Yeah, you're turning, turning a valuable resource into a waste product. It's just not on, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Justine. It was an incredibly valuable contribution, you know, and really does bring perspective. So, yeah, and I have, I have linked your submission to the commissioners, so hopefully they can get that. And if not, I'll just double check and make sure that it's got through to them. So thank you again. And we're gonna, yeah, you're welcome. Awesome. Cool. We're going to take a ten minute break now, everybody, and then we'll come back and invite Joel. I see you're over there in the attendees, Joel Natwery, who will be speaking to us about the cocktail of chemical contamination around Faridoro Marai. So let's, let's switch off for ten minutes and we'll be back shortly. Kilda, Joel. Hi, Joel. Welcome, welcome. Thank you very much for joining us today.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you for the work.
I'm, I'm just going to pop out and I'll let you introduce yourself and begin what you have to share. And then I'll pop back in in about fifteen minutes or just, just prior to that and let you know that we're going to swap over to question time.
Oh, I got a, I got a. I just wanted to acknowledge our Fai Hema firstly, for opening us today and with the Karaki and obviously support their acknowledgements for those, I guess, in Auckland and throughout the country that have gone, obviously with COVID nineteen and last night's events. And those speakers that have gone before me and that are coming, that are coming afterwards. Just want to acknowledge everybody's great work in the space. So, before I go into my presentation, I won't speak too long because I know that I'm limited for time. But, so my name's Joel Natwery. I'm speaking on behalf of Faridoro Marai and Natwaku based at Mount Manganui in Tauranga. And I was just going to share my, see my screen so that we can, I guess, make a start. So, so can someone please give me a thumbs up if they can see the, see the, okay, cool. So, so Faridoro Marai, obviously there is a bit of a daunting image, but I guess that's the reality of where we are today in twenty twenty one. After seven, sorry, five generations of having to deal with heavy toxic industries being built up around us. I'll say much so that obviously, as you'll see soon, there's just a cocktail of chemicals in our environment constantly. Just very briefly, so just quickly, I guess, for those that don't know, who, I guess, we're going through, who are we? I guess a map, so you know, I guess some imagery of what our community looks like. Understand who our neighbours are, what the chemicals are that are in the, that are in the air. And then let's look at the quantitative and qualitative data to, I guess, next to, I guess, when it's married up to international research, which I'm guessing most online, already aware of when we're talking air pollution. And just find the opportunities, opportunities that we're trying to encourage local and central government to to try and rectify the issue. So just very quickly, so I guess, at Faridoro and Natwaku, the founder descended from, from Taiyo Huri Nato, this is, this is his Marai. He established it in eighteen, well, he built the Faridoro Kitahe in eighteen sixty seven, was it being finished in eighteen seventy three? The large majority of our, obviously of our, of our community is Maori. And it was, well, I guess, was a standing community of roughly one hundred and fifty eight, but obviously that goes up in more in summer. And we've got a Ko Hangaril or Early Childhood Education Centre, and we've got the Iwi Office. But if you, if you, if you're really looking here, that I guess, the thing I want to look at is the at-risk group, which is over sixty and under twelve for our community, that's seventy nine percent of our community is those two groups that are most at risk when you're talking about the cumulative harm from exposure to, or long-term exposure to chemicals in particular. So just quickly, let's, I guess, what do we look like? What does the village look like? So if we, if we're looking at on the left, so I'm just, those that don't, if you don't know where Tauranga is or the Mount Manganui. And so if you come into Tauranga and you're going over the Harbour Bridge, you'll normally get to a point where you start, where you wind your window up. And because you'll start to be suffocated by disgusting odours coming from industries around you. And once you start winding your window up, which is around about where that red box is, then you'll know that you're getting close to El Morai. So if you look at the red box, and we're just going to zoom in on the red box there. So this is El Morai here. So as I mentioned before, we've got, we've got, I guess, around about a community of roughly about one hundred and sixty, which, but it does go up, obviously, when we've got visitors at El Morai. And so you've got a resident community that's, I guess, final that a majority of the residents are connected to the Marai, but we've also got those that aren't, but are very much part of our, of our community. We've got our, our Kamatau or retirement village, as mentioned, we've got our, obviously, we've got our Marai. We've got our Ko Hangaril and we've got the Iwi Office. So if we're looking at that, then let's, you know, what's the neighbours that are around us? So if you're looking at, again, if you, these are the neighbours that, as you can see right on our doorstep. So they've got balanced agri nutrients with their fertilizer plant, where they, I guess, where they manufacture super phosphate. You've got the Port of Tauranga behind them, then you've got Waste Management, New Zealand, which, this is not rubbish. This is where they come in, where they get, where they bring in, I guess, used oil and fuel and they refine it. And then we've got New Zealand Oil Services, Lauter Chemical Solutions. And they manufacture products based off, after they extract resin and, and resin from, from forestry. We've got thousands and thousands of logs stored behind them. And then we've got CRIS containers where they store containers on an unsealed site, six high. And then we've obviously got Tauranga Airport. But if we're looking at that, so that, I guess, I guess, what does all that mean for Faridoro though? What does that mean for me and my kids and our elderly? When you've got these sort of industries that just happen to be, you know, ring fenced around, around your whanau and around your Marai. What it looks like is this. So, so when we, I guess, if we're talking about a toxic cocktail of chemicals surrounding Faridoro Marai. So if we're looking at balanced agri nutrients, who are forty metres away from our nearest whanau house and they're eighty metres away from our Kamatau or our retirement village. Again, where they have, where they process, where they import phosphate, blood phosphate from overseas. And then they process it, manufacture it through an acid treatment plant. And to come up with the fertilizer, which then they, which then they transport through to Waikato. Those are their chemicals, waste management, again, you can see there's Lauter Chemical Solutions, CRIS containers. And Port of Tauranga as well, where they're still using methyl bromide and, and the likes to fumigate the logs. You'll see there also that we've got, there's no incites of contaminated soil. And we've also add Lauter Chemical Solution stuff. It's been tested and found positive to have PFAs in the soil there. And further testing has found PFAs in the stream running, that runs down to our moana. You'll see the, I guess, the middle red dot when you're looking at discharge into the moana. We're actually just going through the environmental court against CRIS containers who have had a number of sediment discharges into the moana as well. So it's, it's ongoing. It's, I guess, it's not just chemicals in the land, sorry, in the air that we breathe. It's also chemicals in our waterways. And as you can see, it's also chemicals in our land. So, sorry, if you're looking at, go back to this one. If you look at the yellow dot at El Morai there, that's by our Fariduni and by our Ko Hangaril. And so just draw your attention to that. And then just bring you over here. So this is what we've got here is that's the air data monitoring, air monitoring data station that Bayaplini Regional Council have put. And as you can see there, the yellow, the yellow triangle is our Ko Hangaril. And the other purple is our, is our Fariduni Roruy Kitahe, which was established in eighteen sixty seven and finished in eighteen seventy three. So I guess, if we're moving into the space of what's, what's that, you know, what are they gathering? What's, what, what, what's the data that Bayaplini Regional Council have been collecting from that site? So this is, this is the data that I've got from Bayaplini Regional. Um, so this is, this is the data that I've got from Bayaplini Regional Council. Um, so this is from the year twenty twenty, and we're looking at the hourly mean. Um, at the top left-hand corner, um, we'll start at the top left-hand corner, and we're looking at TSB or Total Suspended Particles. Um, on the right, uh, going clockwise, um, is, uh, H two S or hydrogen sulphide. Bottom right-hand corner, uh, we're looking at sulfur dioxide, um, and then the bottom left-hand corner, uh, we're looking at, um, PM ten. So as you can see there, um, we've, uh, uh, our Koangariel, uh, and our whano are being exposed to these chemicals, this this concoction of chemicals, um, harmful chemicals, um, every hour of the day, um, and that, and we just can't get away from it. And and when I say we can't get away from it, um, I'll just, we'll just move, this is what, I guess, what it looks like. I guess the end result being that this is the norm, um, for our whano at Faridore. Um, now, this is, so we've got the qualitative data, uh, quantitative data that's coming from, 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 uh, the monitoring station. But if we're looking at the qualitative and the experiences of our whano at Faridore, you know, this is what, this is what everybody has said that they've been experiencing. Um, so what happened in two thousand and nineteen? Um, uh, I was, I guess, we were asked to put a, put a letter together to the, to the, to the New Zealand Government at the time. Um, and, um, we we asked, we asked the father to put on one side of the paper, it all of the health experiences that that they've been, um, that they've noticed since being, being at, at coming home to the Marai, um, or coming and living in our, in our community. Um, and also, um, I guess, the property damage, then we themed that all together, um, and we put it all together, and I guess, everybody's experience, or what we noticed was that everybody's experiencing the same thing, which wasn't a surprise at all. Um, but this is what everybody's been experiencing, respiratory issues, asthma, um, headaches, migraine, migraines, you know, obviously my own. Um, now we've seen our own, uh, our our own kids in our community, you know, just vomit for no reason. Um, and then all of a sudden, when we get bombarded with, um, I guess, the 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 noxious odours that are coming from Lauter or or, um, Balance. Um, and, uh, sore eyes, nose throat, I mean, that's, that's an everyday, almost an everyday occurrence, um, for our whano and our elderly. Uh, mental health's a big issue, obviously, um, you know, um, and, you know, sadly, you know, we can attest to premature deaths being, um, being, I guess, air pollution and the chemicals in particular matter, that I guess, being, being a key contributor to, or being the, uh, the key contributor to to the death of of, um, a number of our our elderly, our Kamatau. Um, and then if we're looking at the, you know, I guess, then when I, when I, um, when I looked at the Ministry of Health, uh, Ministry for the Environment, World Health Organisation, United Nations and Toyota Order Public Health. Um, all of their data, all of the information talks about if you're being exposed to these, being exposed to these chemicals, um, or particular matter over a a long period of time, um, then these are the health issues that you're gonna experience. So we've got the data to show it, we've got the, um, what we're being exposed to, we've got our whano, um, giving feedback on what what they're suffering, uh, from, to, and even suffering to, like, today, this week, we've had whano contact us, that they're suffering from these things, and then we've got the, the, I guess, these organisations, um, giving the, I guess, um, sharing their research and it's, you know, it's, it's well-recognised, um, research in terms of, so we've got all three, um, connecting the dots, and if we connect all the dots, you can see that our whano are being exposed, um, to to harm deliberate, um, chemical violence. I won't shit too much on this, obviously, but, um, obviously, these are just, these comments from World Health Organisation, Professor Jushandell, um, and I just confirmation from Ministry of Health, Environment and Toyota Order. Um, if we take ourselves back to to, um, a COVID lockdown, um, in twenty twenty. Um, again, so we're in lockdown, um, like everybody else in the country, which is fine, um, but, um, like everybody else, we play the game, but our neighbours that are forty metres away or eighty metres away from our Kamatau, um, their production goes through the reef, and so does the air pollution, so do the chemicals in the air. Um, and so, uh, if you're looking at, um, I guess, one, we're, um, point one, you know, that over that period, two of our, two of our nannies, um, uh, went ill, struggling to breathe. Uh, one we were able to work with, the other one we had to take, I had to, I had to take her to her doctors, you know, and, um, that, you know, and it was all caused from the issues, uh, from that air pollution, which triggered it. Now, that that nanny never recovered from that incident, and sadly, she passed away, uh, twelve weeks ago, because of her health was never able to recover from that, I guess, from the respiratory problems that she experienced, uh, on that day. We'd go to number two, uh, I was put that that day there, um, I was playing with my kids, um, uh, at the back of the, at the back, at the rugby field behind us, um, just kicking the ball around, um, then I started getting a headache, and I guess our, um, our actions on or what we do when we experience these things, that we just grab everybody, run into the house, close all the windows and turn the air conditioning on. Um, so what happened with those two events? I I took the dates for those two events, and then so when I got the information from from, um, Regional Council, it was no surprise to me, uh, that we were able to marry it up and see that there was, um, I guess, increase in, um, uh, in chemicals in particular matter in our air during that day, during those, uh, those dates. So if we're looking at the life cycle, now let's go back to our children. I mean, if if children are supposed to be the, you know, the children, our children are the most important things i- in society. Um, well, you think so more than money. Um, but if we're looking at the the life, the life cycle of of a childhood, tamariki, from conception, um, which is arguably, uh, where they're most being exposed to these, these chemicals in particular matter. Um, obviously, they're born for the first five years, they're going from their home and they're going to the Koangariel. Um, so where where do they get a break from this exposure to the chemicals in particular matter? Um, now, have they hit five, and then they'll go to the, uh, they'll not, not more than likely, go to the Kurukopapa, uh, out there at Otepo or at Matapi. Um, or they'll have some, I guess, that'll be their break, um, from the exposure to these chemicals, and then they'll come home. Um, and then, I guess, for that, obviously, five to eighteen, that schooling, when they're at school, that's their break. Rest of their life, they're stuck and they're being exposed to these chemicals. Um, just quickly, um, hazard management, as you can see there, um, so this was on the, um, on the night of December two thousand and nineteen, on on the afternoon, sorry, the same day as the, uh, Fakari, um, or White Island eruption. Lauter Chemical Solutions had a chemical spill. Um, as you can see, there's a number of fire trucks, and this is a young family, actually, um, uh, young mother here with her two, two young children, who, her partner's at home, and she was stuck, couldn't get there, couldn't get, um, her partner, or couldn't get him out. Um, myself and my wife, we were outside, just got home from work, um, kids at home, and the only way that we could get our kids is we were told that, um, you ring them up, tell them to run out onto the motorway, um, peak our traffic, tell them to run out of the motorway. Um, you you swing onto the side, throw them in, and then you carry on. Um, that's the extent of the hazard management that's been, um, that's been put in place for Faridore. Um, to date, there's still nothing. We've got all of these heavy industries, we've all got all of these toxins, um, and combust, all this combustible material, um, and still there's no, there's no, um, hazard management plan, um, for these industries, um, or for for our whano. Or, you know, dare I say, even for, um, uh, if there was an incident, uh, during peak our traffic, uh, which was, uh, I guess, a major incident, uh, which would be affecting, um, thousands and thousands of people, um, not just ourselves. So I guess, um, I guess, how did we get here? Like, how did we get, how did, how did Faridore end up being ring fenced by all of these, all of those chemicals? Um, so obviously, colonisation played a part, you know, if we're looking at land confiscations, public exec, um, forced land sales, uh, institutionalised structural racism, alienation disposition, local governments had a, had a huge hand in in and we were at both, Tauranga City Council in the, in the boroughs, which were their predecessors, um, and obviously Bayaplini Regional Council. Um, now, none of those, none of these groups have ever, um, been in a point where they've acted responsibly when it's coming, coming to the, um, health and wellbeing of our whano and and Faridore. Um, because what are they a major, you know, what's their major interest is supporting the profit economic drivers and before, um, public health. Um, central government's failing because we've got Ministry for the Environment, Health, um, and Emergency Management, um, also failing us. Failure to to meet the 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 standards of Union of, of Andripo, you know, Declaration Rights of Indigenous People. Uh, Port and Industries failing abysm- abysmally. Um, I won't get into the opportunities too much, um, but, but, um, I just want, what I do want to point out is is that, um, you know, there's a huge conflict of interest, uh, between Bayaplini Regional Council, who own fifty four percent of the port, um, and these industries, which are, I guess, feeding into the port and driving up the profits. Especially when we've got the chairman for the Bayaplini Regional Council, who's on the port, um, on the board for the port, and we've also got a director for balanced agrinutrients, who's also on the board for the port, um, and they're making decisions to, I guess, increase the profits for the port, to feed, I guess, and then, uh, fifty four percent of those, I guess, uh, share dividends, go back to Bayaplini Regional Council. Um, so with this, we have huge issues with the, Bayaplini Regional Council is a regulatory body. Um, Joel, if it's okay. I won't, the the majority of that is, is the, the remainder is in my, um, is in my, uh, written, uh, statement. But I guess that's, I just wanted to give you a, a, a brief, uh, overview of of Faridore and and what it looks like for our whano, but, um,
Excellent.
In our way, central government, local government and and industry, definitely in our way, you know, we've got many ministers turning up and and making promises and then and not fulfilling them. Um, this, I do want to say that this isn't a Maori issue, this isn't just affecting Faridore. Yep, we're at the centre of it, but this is affecting families right throughout Mount Manganui, and, um, it needs to be addressed, it needs to be addressed, um, quickly.
Thank you very, very much, Joel. That was an excellent presentation and really helped us to understand what you're going through.
I know that's quite a bit, and I, you know, I probably made quite a bit to take on, um,
Yeah.
in a short space of time, but, um, you've got my, um, written submission, and I'm happy to, um, be contacted if there's any questions.
Great. Well, we'll just open the floor now for the commissioners, if they have any questions for you, um, before we finish up, but thank you very much. That was, that was excellent and really, really, um, helped to highlight the major issues that are going on there.
Well, Tina Kweina Tikkuku, thank you so much for, um, that quarter, and I was quite disturbed about the.
I can't hear anybody if.
Oh.
For some reason.
Oh, can you?
Sorry.
Can you hear now? Or? Can you, can you hear, hear us now, Joel? No. Uh, hmm. I can hear you. Uh, is your, is your mute button? Oh, no, no.
No, it looks like his mute is is off, so, um.
Something to do with the speakers, this is.
Yeah.
And you might have to unplug the headset and see if it comes out the computer speakers automatically, just a thought, that mine does that.
Yeah.
Take this off?
Yeah, take this off.
Does that work? Does that make it any better?
I'm just gonna, um, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yeah.
I'm saying I go quickly, go, sorry, I'm just gonna quickly move over to where my wife is, so I can hear who listening in. Um, to say that I can answer any questions that you ask.
Have you got a laptop? Oh, you won't hear me.
Yep.
Oh, can you hear now?
Yeah, I can.
Oh, kapai, oh, Tina Kweina Tikkuku, and, um, thank you so much, I te, te ne te mahiarohaki akautau. Um, um, you know, na'uri or, um, hori natai, Tina Kwe. So, um, what do you think would be the best outcome for for all the people in Mount Manganui around that? What would, what do you think's missing in terms of them activate more, um, more, I guess, um, how can, how can they change the, um, how can you change that that whole area there? What 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 are some of the things you you would like to see happen? I guess that's really what I want to say.
Um, Best outcome. Happen is is central government and, um, Bayaplini Regional Council, City Council and and industries, um, need to come together and develop a fit for purpose, um, heavy or sustainable, um, heavy industrial park, um, which is able to, um, service the port and, and I guess, um, support these industries and regional council to continue making profits from the port. Um, and obviously not impact, um, uh, the economic, uh, I guess, drivers for the country, that's out of, that runs out of the port. Um, so I guess, that's, 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 that needs to be done, because the, at the moment, the, um, the 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 Port of Tauranga is actually working on a resource consent to to extend, um, the stellar passage or to extend their footprint. Um, and we, and we know that the, I guess, the mount is the footprint of the Mount Heavy Industries is, there's nothing left, there's nowhere left for them to go. So, uh, and and the amount of damage that they're doing to, not, I guess, not only Faridore, but like I said, the the wider Manganui community, um, is, is, is just unacceptable in twenty twenty one. Um, so I guess that would be, I guess, a move forward would be a fit for purpose heavy industrial area that can take it, um, support the industries, um, that can support the port, um, and economic drivers, but also, um, gives, um, takes that, takes that poison out of a residential, um, in Marai, uh, area, um, and then then we can, um, look, I guess, what's, what's a better fit for purpose, uh, a better utilisation of that land, um, whether that be a housing, multi-modal, um, transport corridors to get people from, um, from their housing to 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 work in the city, to to the beach and entertainment areas and whatnot.
Is it, do you know if there's been, um, uh, um, much soil testing done around that area at all?
Yeah, so the, um, so that, as I mentioned, that there's the contaminated site, um, with heavy metals there, there's contaminated sort across the road there, um, with PFAs in the soil. Um, and they know that there's PFAs in the, um, in the, in the, in the stream that that runs out into, I guess, the beach where our kids swim. Um, and we've just been challenging, um, Bayaplini Regional Council to to get, to get a move on, um, and do testing in soil, in of the soil and all of the heavy industries, um, that are presently there, um, that that have, uh, I guess, historically been, uh, located right throughout the mountains, um, because, um, they don't know, they don't know what Regional Council, City Council, the government, they don't know the impact of these heavy industries in terms of the soil. To date, they don't even know, they can't, they don't have the, uh, I guess, the the information and being able to manage and monitor the the air discharges that they're giving out. Just this week, we've been told that, um, Bayaplini Regional Council have withdrawn a infringement notice on the, um, on Lauter Chemical Solutions for the odours that are coming off their site, um, because they can't pinpoint that. Um, now, everybody in in Tauranga, especially in in the mountain, at Faridore, can tell you very offhand, um, who the, um, what smell and who it's coming from, whether it be the the the, the, whether it's coming from Lauter Balance Waste Management, um, down Manganui, um, road and the families down there, now they'll be able to tell you who's, you know, the ash filter and whatnot. But Regional Council, the measures that they have in place, they can't follow through, um, uh, with with with, is simply being able to monitor and forcefully, um, uh, I guess, improve the odor. So how are they gonna be able to do that with with the chemicals in the air?
Yeah. Tina Kwe, thank you, Joel. I'll let the commissioner, other commissioners speak and.
Okay, Joel, and thank you very much for your presentation and your submission. Um, what you're all experiencing there is totally and utterly unacceptable. Um, how it gets solved is the difficulty, and so I have a couple of questions for you. Um, one is, what has the reaction been to your proposal to shift the industries away? And have you been able to identify a site for them to go to? The second is my concern that even if they do shift those industries away, you've still got the airport, the port, the roadway, and the contaminated soil and sediment to to deal with, and and how will you manage that? And, um, thirdly, I suppose, um, a last fallback option would be, uh, for zero discharge contents for all of those industries, uh, which would actually stop them functioning, quite frankly, because they can't manage it. Um, well, it would cost them a lot of money, they could manage it. So I'd just like your reaction to those things.
Yeah, um, so, uh, I guess, so Keysight Holdings is the commercial arm of 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 Bayaplini Regional Council in, obviously, the port and their their crossovers, they've got, they've got land, um, that that's emac. Um, but what, I guess, before we, I guess, before we can go into that, what we've always said at Faridore is you can't take this heart out or this poison from our community and then go and dump it and place it on top of another community. Um, so that's the first thing that that, I guess, we all wanna make, make, make very clear, we're not saying take this and put it on someone else. Um, because let's, let's take this and and develop it, develop it in a fit, a fit for purpose zone, um, a fit for purpose area and make it fully sustainable. And yeah, it'd be great if these industries were able to recapture one hundred percent while they're there. And I guess, what we what we do know is that the the airshed that that's been placed over the mount is not working. It's and it's not, in reality, it's not designed to work. It's designed to be able to make people feel like they're actually doing something. Sorry, I'm probably gonna miss some of some of my answers to your question, but
Oh, yeah, my concern was about even if you get the industries out, you've still got the port, airport and roadway and all the contaminated soil and sediment.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, no, you're right. But I guess, you know, if every industry that leaves is is a percentage of job relief. You know, and if let's get, let's get these industries out. Because we're never able, we're never going to be able to remediate or 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 clear or cleanse the soil with all of these industries still operating there. The airport, hey, that that's it's it's our borough, it's used, it's our borough, it's used there. The city, you know, there's there's already discussions, there's already been plans about relocating that, you know. I mean, we, if we are fine, we know that it's on on land that's been confiscated through public works and the likes, but now relocate the stuff and then, you know, until that's done, nothing can be, nothing can be, nothing can be achieved to to fix this for for our final or families right throughout the mountain.
Kia ora, Joel. I'm Tina Kweina Kwe. I was absolutely blown away when I read your submission. Especially the monitoring graphs and well, first the map showing everything that's there, then the monitoring graphs and the effects. This is the kind of thing that we think happens in those chemical alleys overseas, right? Nobody thinks this is happening here. I, so my interest is the is legal regulation. I think there are actually a lot of legal options all the way from, you know, reviewing consent conditions up to council enforcement actions, but and it's not just, it's not just treaty issues, even though that might have been the beginning of them. This is this is a bill of rights deprivation of life issue. This, you've actually got a bill of rights claim here. And so that's obviously something to pursue outside of this forum, but it is absolutely, as far as it, absolutely unacceptable. And you've got five years of data. I can see why without the data, you couldn't do anything before this, but these, yeah, this shouldn't be happening and something has to be done. It can't just be left to, you know, going to ministers and waiting for the right political time. Doesn't matter if it costs money for a company if they have to put in, you know, the right filters. I use filter broadly. I don't know the technology if they have to put in the right thing or to clean up the damage. You know, that's simple nuisance law. You have to clean up the damage that you do to other people. And there's a lot of things that need to be considered. I also note that, well, this is, I'm guessing, these are the same people that import that import what we would call blood phosphate, you know, from the Western Sahara, which has already got separate actions and campaigns against them. Not looking good. The only reason they're doing it is because it's cheap. All right, so, yeah. Yeah, anyway, obviously I could go on. I think it's obviously it's more of a comment than a question. I had questions, then I realised I answered them myself in your submission, like the length of time and, you know, what you've done. So I think it's the kind of thing I'd love to chat later. And use, you know, you want to do.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Joel, and thank you, commissioners. I'm sorry just to have to cut you off there, Joel, but that was an excellent, excellent presentation. And and no doubt Catherine will maybe get in touch with you and and obviously we are all wanting to see where this goes. And thank you for sharing that. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, commissioners, would you mind if we go straight into our next testimonial so that we can maintain our hour break for lunch? Is that okay with you all? Okay, I'm going to invite our next next speaker. Fiona McQueen, I'm gonna find you there and just transition transition you over to being a panelist so that you can switch on your audio and video. All right, there we go. Hi Fiona, welcome. Thank you for joining us today.
Right. Now, I'd like to be able to open my PowerPoint, but
If you have a look in the menu below, there should be a button that says screen share. Now, if you have your document open in the background and then you click on the screen share, it'll allow you to select what you want to share. So, welcome to Dr Fiona McQueen. Fiona, I'm going to hand over to you to introduce yourself and and just do check if you can screen share. That should be working.
I should be able to. All right, well. Good morning, everybody, and thank you very much for inviting me to this forum. I've watched quite a lot of it over the last three days and I must say I've been very impressed to hear these testimonies from so many different people given with such honesty. And it's been very moving, actually. Now, my position as far as this morning is concerned is particularly to do with ten eighty, which I'll talk about mostly, but I'll I'll also try and step back a little bit so that I can give a broader view of what I think how we could possibly progress in New Zealand with regard to poisons in general and ten eighty in particular. So I'll just try and see if I can. So can people see that? No, yes. Can you hear me okay? Because I don't know that I can hear you. You can. Okay. So I come into this because I'm a medical doctor, I'm a rheumatologist, a specialist in rheumatology. But I'm also a very keen environmentalist and trampor, and I've done that all my life. And I'm particularly bonded, if you like, to the Sman Alps region, especially in around the Fakatipu Basin. I live in Glenorki now. I used to live in Auckland. And about six years ago, I moved to live in Glenorki. And at around that time, the whole issue of ten eighty sort of came into my consciousness. I had prior to that just been a very I had had the same sort of concept of ten eighty that I think the vast majority of people have in New Zealand, which is that it must be okay. It is so widely used. Doc must know what they're doing. There's all the science to support it. It must be fine. But I have friends who are hunters, and one of the first things that came into my mind about ten eighty was that a friend had been to Fiordland hunting and came back and said there's something wrong in the forest. And he had been to the same very remote area the the year prior, and the bird song had been deafening, especially in the evenings. On this particular trip, they went in a different way, a rather obscure way through bush bashing, really, into the heart of the forest and the bush. And they came across dead birds on the ground, including wood pigeons. And they also came across deer lying on the ground, dead. And this friend said to me, it looked like they did not die easily. The the ground was churned up. Anyway, they looked around, they didn't hear any birds. The forest was very quiet. The only thing he noticed were a lot of wasps. And I can reply to the wasp issue a little later on. Anyway, they walked out and on the way out, they came across signs saying that ten eighty had been dropped. And they were disturbed by the whole business. So that was the first time I really understood that there was something going on. Then subsequently, I moved to live in Glenorki and became friends with someone who's an organic gardener here and learned that ten eighty was being dropped all over the greenstone, the root burn, the Milford tracks directly onto the tracks. And I was rather appalled and decided to go in and investigate for myself. So that book there is was the result of that, that was published five years ago and four years ago and things have moved on since then. But this picture sort of summarizes quite a bit of the horror of this whole process. I didn't take this picture. This was passed on to me by a friend of a friend. When I first saw it, I couldn't believe it. But this is, I now believe, a true picture. I don't think this is a mock-up. And these are the the containers that are held underneath the helicopters when they drop ten eighty. That's ten eighty pellets. That's the color they are. And that's Doc trying to do a cleanup of a pristine stream somewhere in the South Island, probably on the West Coast. I think that's just shocking. You know, that shocks me to the core. And this is our beautiful country that we live in and we must protect. And this, to me, is completely alien to that concept. So I'll just go on now and go through things in a somewhat more systematic way. There it's a huge area and I'm just summarizing a few points. But one of the things that the public is frequently told is this mantra, the science proves it. They always put the science as if it's sort of God, you know. But in fact, when you go into it and look at it, and my book contains over two hundred references, two hundred and forty or something, where I've actually got the original studies from the library. I am an academic. Although I'm a medical academic, I can read scientific literature in other areas. I discovered that it's actually similar. You know, way of thinking and you can you can sort of work it out. And I also had the help from a number of very better informed people like Joe Pollard, for example, who's an important zoologist and anti-ten eighty campaigner. And so I was able to read these papers and certainly could see very quickly that many of the studies that are supporting the use of ten eighty or proving its benefit have been extremely poorly designed. Their methodology is highly flawed. Whiting O'Keefe's, who are based in Coramandal, and I'm sure the commissioners will have heard that that name. They have gone into this in even more detail than I have. But there are many flaws in the scientific background for ten eighty. Studies that show negative results tend to be forgotten about or not reported. And there's a complete lack of long-term prospect of randomised controlled studies. Now, clearly, it's very difficult to do those studies in the environment. And I come from a medical background where you might do them in a population of people. But there are ways to study things. And I'll show you, I'll show you a little bit of evidence where that has actually been done. But the science definitely does not prove it. I can say that to you very definitely. It is a mantra that is rolled out for the public and, you know, they, many of them, most of them have taken that as just the truth. The other, another mantra is the only tool in the toolbox, which always makes me feel sick when they start saying that. Because there are other alternatives and trapping, for example, is one of them. But they're not given any weight. So I will discuss that as well. And then the prochemicals culture, which we've heard about extensively over the last three days, especially in the last excellent presentation from Joel. Monitoring and control of funding by stakeholders, it's the same story all the way through. A compliant and ill-informed media who do not give a balanced viewpoint. And then, of course, this ridiculous demonisation of anti-ten eighty groups and pro-environment groups and anti-chemicals groups all the way through. So these are recurring themes. So the science proves it, business. Here, I think, is one piece of data I'd like to show you. Can you see my cursor there where I'm using it to outline? Yeah. So this is actually from a study published in New Zealand Journal of Ecology, which does publish a lot of pro-ten eighty studies, but here was one that actually didn't suggest that ten eighty was helpful. And this was a long-term study. These are rat tunnels, rat tracks. Okay, so what these investigators did was to put little boxes in areas which had had ten eighty drops. That's the top panel and the bottom panel. And the middle panel is where there were boxes to measure rat tracks. This middle panel, there was no ten eighty. So here we've got two treated areas, if you like. They always use this word treated rather than poisoned because it sounds better. And we have a middle box which tells us the untreated area. And the times of treatment are the dotted lines. So here we are. At the top, we have quite a lot of rats, presumably. This is the number of rat tracks in the boxes indicating, giving an indication of the number of rats up here at point five. And when the ten eighty was dropped, there's a sudden drop down to zero, as one would expect, because it's a poison of rats. But you will notice that here is a beach mast, this grey, these grey zones, like with beach masts. And subsequently, the levels increase and really get very high. And if you compare that with this one down here, where there was no ten eighty dropped, you will see that there's actually very little difference, except that the overshoot here gives you greater numbers of rats than you did without ten eighty. So this is partly because you kill off all the rats about the six to ten percent will survive, the aerial drop. And then you will have the young rats coming through, and these are very vigorous and they multiply. And so over the long term, you do not reduce rat numbers with ten eighty. In fact, you increase rat numbers and they're more likely to be damaging to bird populations. And the same thing down here, ten eighty dropped, no rats. Here they come, they repopulate and can be very, very damaging, obviously, to the native birds. Second one, I want to mention quickly, and we've heard a little bit about peers from Justine already this morning. These poor birds, these beautiful birds terribly endangered. Personally, I think that ten eighty is very likely to be a major reason for their disappearance. It is acknowledged by Doc that there is definite mortality post-ten eighty in Kia populations. And they give this rather ridiculous huge spread of figures. But if you look at these individual figures, you will see that there are many, many animals. You know, half the population routinely are killed by ten eighty drops. Now, the words we're given is that there's a net benefit because you have increased nesting success after poisoning. But according to Joe Pollard, who is a very knowledgeable person in this area, nesting success of survivors increases when a bird population is culled. This is part of the way Mother Nature tries to get things back on track. But if you're going to kill half your population, you are not going to have so many birds nesting. I mean, it's just obvious. And I would agree with one of the previous speakers that personally, I've recently been to the West Coast over the Arthur's Pass area, and there was an area where kia's were supposed to be looked at. It's a fantastic viewing point for kia's. There were no kia's there. And I've also heard testimony from an acquaintance who was working on one of the huts on one of the tracks just after one of the ten eighty drops. The kia's around, which were there prior to the drop, were making a dreadful noise as if they were screaming. I mean, you know, this is a horrible poison. It is a dreadful way for an animal to die. It takes at least forty eight hours. They they scream, they writhe in agony. And what on earth are we doing in New Zealand? Poisoning one of our most important native creatures and, of course, the kia is only one. And then the mention was made earlier of inveterates. Well, in fact, there is evidence that ten eighty poisons inveterates. And here's an old paper from Nottingham. But if you read my book and other books that have been written on this, Mike Meads was a very important academic who has now died, who was involved in monitoring the impact of insect populations in the Puri Rora Forest in the North Island after multiple ten eighty drops. And he found a huge loss of insect life across the board. But that was not published and he Uh but that was not published and he uh Poisoning Paradise, the Graff Brothers um video tells you the story of Mike Meads. But he was relegated um to um obscurity and his career was, was killed by this whole business and he very sadly um lost his reputation as a scientist, um you know. So this is what people face if they actually try and go against the, the prevailing wisdom, if you like. Um one of the awful things about insect poisoning, well, one of the important things to be aware of is that many of the doc studies deal with wetter. Now, wetter are particularly resistant to ten eighty. In fact, about a hundred times more resistant than the average insect. So they're way outside, if you look at a bell curve of normal responses, they're right on one end. So they're not a good representative of insects and, you know, in the New Zealand bush. And again, the Whiting O'Keefe's have talked about this in detail. How should we deal with this, with pest species? And I hesitated to use the word pest here. Um but I have because it's shorter. But, you know, if we want to maintain native bird populations, what can be done? And certainly barriers can be used and small areas can be protected by predator-proof fences, but they are hugely expensive. Wildlife sanctuaries have been established in Zelandia, for example, Wellington I've visited. And it's, it's amazing, you know, you can see Takahii, you can see Tuatara and so on. Um but the idea that you can make all of New Zealand pest-free is, is ridiculous. Um you cannot um just say, well, natural boundaries will be effective. Uh pest species, stoats, rats are incredibly able to get around the edges of boundaries. And for example, stoats have re-invaded Secretary Island in Fiordun after that was completely cleared of stoats. Um the new invaders were DNA-type, so it was clear that they were new. Um so, you know, barriers have, have use, but primarily for localised areas that can be wildlife preserves. Um trapping, I won't go into in detail. I don't personally think it's likely to affect the overall population of things like possums. Um but certainly can be useful for possum fur and it's a source of income. And there's some very interesting information about that. Um I won't deal with TB in possums. I've talked about that in my book extensively and lots of other people have as well. It is not a big issue at all. It is actually, um there is very little evidence to suggest that the possum is a significant vector of Mycobacterium bovis that causes bovine TB. Um that is, that is a fabrication and um I won't go into that evidence now, but um that's something to be aware of. I will make a quick comment about technology. Um people are talking about gene drives, you know, can we uh change the genetics of, for example, rats? And then um allow these rats to populate our wild areas and they'll all die and that'll be perfect. We might have to put poisons on. Um well, personally, I am highly suspicious of this. I don't think this is a good idea at all. Uh the gene drive technology is a very powerful technology. And I've mentioned a little bit about that at the top here. Um you insert um some RNA to silence a specific gene or insert a new one. And then the whole thing copies itself and eventually you have two copies of gene drive that's passed on to a hundred percent of the offspring. This is a way of getting around natural evolution, of course. But resistance occurs, mutations occur. Um Mother Nature is very difficult to cancel out, she's a very powerful person. Um and it is, has the potential to be immensely powerful and to change the course of things in ways that we may not be able to predict. And perhaps more importantly, in ways that we cannot reverse. So I have to say that from my scientific background, I am very opposed to the idea of gene drive technology in uh in rats to reduce their population. I don't think that's a good idea. Um changing the culture, I think, is incredibly important. When I look back um to my twenties and teens, everybody smoked, okay? We were all smokers. I used to smoke, despite the fact that I'm asthmatic. Doctors smoked, um it was the culture. Is it possible for us to change the culture in New Zealand from um chemicals and pesticides to a cooperative paradigm uh where the natural but modified ecosystem, we can work with it? And there are examples of this working. Um we have wildlife sanctuaries already, offshore islands, uh areas like Zelandia where we've got um little areas of um na- native birds and animals that are uh protected. There are examples overseas where, for example, in Yellowstone National Park, predators were reintroduced. Wolves, I'm sure you'll be aware of that example, and the whole ecosystem rebalanced itself. Um and then there's the interesting example of Chernobyl uh where people didn't go in there for a long time and the wolves have re-established themselves. And a natural ecosystem has re-established itself despite the fact that there is a lot of radioactivity, quite clearly. Um but my um idea is really that we need to get away from this killing that monopolises conservation. And here's Ariane Walach, who's a um, an Australian ecologist. Um that Justine um will be, will know. Talking about this vision of restoring ecological communities to ancestral configurations. So people hear the doc mentality is that we can go back to sort of Gondwana land. Um we can restore our ecosystem to something that was prehistoric. Um and everything will be wonderful, the birds will be deafening. Um but that is not going to happen. Um you, you only look, have to look at the example of COVID to see how we, we are a planet. Everything moves around and we can't change that now. Um so that sort of fantasy is incredibly harmful for animals. I'll just skip over that. I've already mentioned this hands-off, I think that's terribly important. Natural control mechanisms in the ecosystem do exist and need to be um allowed to exist and to continue. And there are examples, for example, uh sorry, the, at the bottom there, use of introduced species to natives' advantage, gorse can be nurse plants for native seedlings. So we need more research and more knowledge into how to work with the natural ecosystem, the natural modified ecosystem uh without harming things. So in summary, ten eighty and other poisons, I believe, can never work. Um the damage to the ecosystem is far greater than any possible benefit. And the damage is permanent when, for example, you think of animals such as the Kia being made completely extinct. Um the science does not prove it. The science is full of holes. And I believe that newer technologies such as dream, gene drives are fraught with danger. We need to change the paradigm to cooperation and a chemical-free and organic New Zealand uh would be my, my pick. Um allow natural checks and balances to reset themselves and limit the awful effects that humans have had on our most beautiful um natural ecosystem. So that's just a picture uh in, in the Glenoogie area. Um just to show we do have the most extraordinary beauty that we, we need to preserve at all costs. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm just going to stop your screen share now and um thank you very much, Dr Fiona McQueen. That was, that was excellent. I'll hand over to the commissioners now um for some questions and we will break for lunch at twelve, so we've got ten minutes for questions. Thank you.
Thanks for that. I'll start since no one else is unmuting themselves. Um so I'm, yeah, most interested in the science side of the effects. Um and uh so the first thing you've got, you had some references such as to the invertebrate study in the eighties. Um and so I wondered if, like, we've already got um your written submission, but maybe I don't believe that had references to things like that in it. Um if you could, I don't know if you want to send the PowerPoint through or uh a PDF of the PowerPoint would be helpful.
Yeah, I can certainly send the PowerPoint through um. And I can send insect and, and invertebrate references through. I've got those from, from my books, that's in.
Yeah, because, yeah, I was the one that mentioned that, that seems to be the, well, from just what I've seen, the least, it's, we've least looked at collateral damage.
Yeah, well, what I could do is um send a PDF of the chapter of the book and the relevant references um for invertebrates so that, because I did go into that in quite a lot of detail.
Okay, so I haven't read your book.
That's okay. No, no, that's all right. Um it's, I mean, one of the sad things is that when I wrote that book, I sort of thought, wow, there'll be a lot of interest. But um it's very hard to get anything like that out into the, the popular culture. Um people are so biased against ten eight, anti-ten eighty people, if you like.
Yeah, total radical nutters.
Yeah, yeah, who, who loosen the wheels on helicopters and, you know, um it's very, it's very unfortunate and that's a very broadly held view.
Hmm. Oh, oh, I know, but I think the hard thing is um we've also all seen the videos of the stoats. We know, I mean, the, in fact, the, the documentary on TV was, was very well done, I thought, in terms of showing the damage that predators are doing. But it, it's not as simple as restoring an ecosystem or the natural predators of our birds, they, they were made extinct. Um they were other birds.
I mean, and you know.
And so, and so I know the, the, what do you call the ecology of the system we have now is not working. So people go, okay, right, we'll tag at those, but it's that wider systemic collateral damage.
It's a web, you know, it's a web.
No, I agree, the, the web of life.
Yeah.
The whole ecosystemic approach is the hard one. So, yeah, I'm just interested in the, in those wider things like the effects to show what's not being looked at in a laser focus to solve the problem.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, one of the things about stoats that people um forget is that prey switching is very clearly something that happens. They've, they've caught stoats and looked in their stomachs. So these are stoat gut studies, which are rather revolting, but um they tell you what the stoats have been eating. And stoats eat mostly rats. Um but if you drop ten eighty in an area and you decimate all the rats, they will eat birds, native birds. So this is called prey switching. So in fact, this is another um paradoxical or unexpected result of ten eighty. And that, that certainly can occur um with regards to stoats.
Hmm. Okay, what a fire Fiona, you, you, it was incredible presentation you gave us tonight and uh to, to, to this morning. Um and you're the only one that's actually brought up about um genetic um resources like CRISPR and the Cas nine, that kind of thing, but um what, what, in particular, because I've got, got quite an interest in um like the daisy chain that's been developed and so that uh like a daisy chain, it goes along and it all would mean that rats only breed male rats for a period of time and then they would have, then they would um, do, do, would you like to um talk a little bit more about that, your research on that? I'm just, just very interested, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I am certainly not an expert in this. Um I have worked in the Department of Molecular Medicine in Auckland for a number of years and I know a bit about immunology. Um but I'm not a geni- geni- uh, you know, I'm not a genes expert. And gene drives have only come on the radar in the last ten years.
Yes.
Um but I just think that this is very powerful technology. Um I am very concerned that it tinkers with a very complex system. Um you know, I mean, I sort of think in my mind of an example would be the biosphere or the ecosystems are a bit like a Ferrari, if you like. And putting ten eighty and it's like dropping a stone into the engine and expecting it to change things. You know, it's, it's immensely complicated, it's much more complicated than that. Um and we don't know enough about what will happen.
Yes.
It's, there are many, many potential dangers, uh with, many of which we probably don't understand yet. Um so I, in general, I, many over.
Cautionary approach.
A cautionary approach. People are talking about a moratorium on these studies. Um there are advocates um who are usually driven by industry and profit motive. Um and one of the concerns, and this did come out a couple of years ago, is that if New Zealand created a gene drive uh rat that was um unable to reproduce or sterile, we might export that rat to the rest of the world. And that rat might take over everywhere.
That's right.
And then rats have their place too in the um, in the ecosystem. So this is my concern. I just don't think we know enough about it. Um and I would be very opposed to anything uh being released into the wild in New Zealand and along those lines until there's much more research done.
I so agree. No, thank you so much, Fire.
Uh thank you very much Fiona. It was very interesting, um both your submission and your talking. And I've taken lots of notes off your um uh PowerPoint. I just want firstly to share something that you might find entertaining. Here on Waikiki, we have a predator-free Waikiki um program in place. And so they've done extensive knocking on, um trapping of the stoats and knocked them off. Suddenly the rats increased. Damn. Uh there's also now a big, big project to knock out the rats and people all over the island are poisoning rats. Rabbits have gone through the roof. How did that happen? Nobody is making the links. Nobody is, nobody is prepared to say, actually, we've got so many rabbits because we knocked off the rats because we knocked off the stoats. Um so I just thought you might find that just a little entertaining.
Yeah, there, there are studies actually of that model, you know, there's modelling done. And I can send you the uh studies that suggested.
Thank you.
Those will be.
I would appreciate that because I have a little bit of trouble getting people to believe it. They just think it's a strange coincidence. Um but really, what I wanted to ask you was back to the wasps. You mentioned that there were a lot of wasps, where, where there was a lack of bird song and the violent death of deer. Is there anything more you can say about the
Yes.
uh wasp, advent of the wasp problem?
Yes, well, you know, in um the animal kingdom and in the insect kingdom or invertebrate kingdom, you have a, a varie- variation of susceptibility to poisons like ten eighty. So in the animal kingdom, for example, dogs are incredibly susceptible. Uh humans moderately so and fish much less so. Um in the insect kingdom, um wasps are not very susceptible, hardly at all susceptible. Um and wetters are not very susceptible either, or not as much as wasps. And then you've got very susceptible insects further back down like small spiders and beetles and things like that. So basically, what's happening is that you've eliminated the competition. Um you've changed the balance of the ecosystem, which is this incredibly finely balanced um creation. Uh and everything is now favouring the wasps because they, they can fill that niche. And that's what I think has happened. But there's no studies to support that. Nobody's, nobody's looked into that at all. Um but clearly, you know, areas that are heavily ten eighty, you do get wasp plagues. And I think that's probably why.
Let's just have a personal opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr Fiona McQueen. Were there any final questions or comments for Fiona before we finish up?
Just think, just, just lots of gratitude to you, um Fire. This is an excellent presentation and I, I really appreciate your time and um your, your efforts that you've made to protect our environment. So ten eighty, mihi, araha kia kui.
Thank you.
Thank you Fiona.
Thank you.
Great.
We're going to um take our, our long lunch break now, so we will be back again at one o'clock and we'll be starting um a little bit early with Dr Jodie Brunning. So thank you, um Dr Fiona McQueen and everybody, and we'll be back in an hour.